Thanks.
Good evening. The June 12, 2019 meeting of Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Viera?
Here.
Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
Will everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the Constitution of liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. At this time, we have two proclamations. Here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here this evening. So, we have two proclamations this evening. The first is a proclamation that we're going to be giving to Tanya Garcia, who's our library director here in Long Branch, and as a member of the board, the library board, that's why I'm speaking. But Tanya has just been elected as the president of the State Library Association. Rose will read the proclamation. But I'd like to add that three years ago, she was also chosen as the state library director for the state of New Jersey as well. And I might add that this is not just municipal libraries. It's colleges, corporations, universities, a total, if I think of it, about 2,000 institutions or library institutions that we have been lucky enough to have Tanya as our director. So, the council and I wanted to recognize her again for this first achievement of both, being both somebody from Long Branch ever being chosen as a director of state of the library and elected state librarian president for the year. And Tanya also, there's just, you know, I think the reason that she has achieved both is because of just all the progressive things that are taking place in the library. And Rose will mention a few of them, but, you know, the barber shop program, a reading program, which is now recognized, you know, statewide. It's a statewide initiative that started here. We have the first social worker in the state in New Jersey, a reentry program. She's gotten all kinds of grants, and many of you have been to the new library, which in the basement, which just opened last week, which is, you know, has a state-of-the-art movie theater, large community room and so forth. So, I'm going to let Rose take it from here, but thank you.
Tanya, will you please come forward?
Congratulations. Whereas the New Jersey Library Association is a library organization established in 1890, which advocates for the advancement of library services for the residents of New Jersey and provides continuing education and networking opportunities for librarians. And whereas the New Jersey Library Association includes members from not only public libraries, but academic, school, and special libraries. And whereas Tanya Garcia joined the staff of the Long Branch Library on January 12, 2004, and was a two-time recipient of the Laura Bush 21st Century Diversity Recruitment Scholarship, which helped her earn her BA and MLIS degrees. And Tanya rose through the Long Branch Library ranks to become director in 2013. Whereas library director, Tanya is committed to developing services of and for her community because coupled with her compassion is a drive for excellence and innovation. Now, therefore, mayor and city council of the city of Long Branch hereby extend their heartfelt congratulations on her election as the next president of the New Jersey Library Association. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
Thanks to your family and friends for being here as well. And the second presentation is to Mr. Frank Krenn and the Ocean Place Resort. And I just wanted to say that, I guess it was several months ago, I was at a chamber event, and everyone, there was a little buzz about Mr. Krenn being back at the Ocean Place Resort. And I had not met him before, but I soon saw why there was this buzz. But in any event, I, Mr. Krenn also has been very involved in the community and working with the community and with the chamber and the Rotary, and we really appreciate that. But beyond that, I was at an event at the Ocean Place Hilton a few months ago, and he came up to me and he said, you know, "I'd like to have a breakfast for the first responders." And I was like, "What exactly do you mean?" He says, "I just want to have a breakfast for the first responders." I said, "Well, who do you want me to invite?" He said, "Everyone: police, fire, fire, police, first responders." And, I mean, it was an incredible gesture. We all attended, and it was an incredible breakfast. And for that and everything else, I mean, every day I hear something new about Mr. Krenn. I know that he's working with the schools in terms of some of these associations having dinners and so forth. And anything that the community has asked of the Ocean Place Hilton and of Mr. Krenn, he's just been there for all of us. So, with that, Rose, if you could read that certificate of appreciation.
We'd like to present to you the certificate of appreciation to Frank Krenn and the Ocean Place Resort and Spa in sincere appreciation of their generosity in hosting a breakfast for Long Branch first responders at the Ocean Place Resort and Spa presented this 12th day of June, 2019. Congratulations and thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks, Joe. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of May 22, 2019.
To move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Abstain.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Consideration of ordinances, public hearing, and final consideration. This is the second reading of ordinance 18-19 entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 78 of the Code of the City of Long Branch Police Department. This was introduced on May 22, 2019. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding this ordinance? Please step to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Vincent Lapore, 33, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. I attended the insurance commissioner's meeting last week, Friday morning, and there was discussion of this ordinance, 819. Apparently, according to that meeting, this ordinance was written incorrectly approximately a year ago. And if that's such the case, I am requesting that this city build the Aaron Law Firm, the former city attorney, for him properly writing the original ordinance a year ago, and for the corrections that have to be made this evening. The ordinance is interesting in light of what is occurring in LBDPD, particularly most recently. It essentially states, "The mayor is hereby designated as, quote, 'the appropriate authority.' The appropriate authority, or is designated, shall be responsible for the overall performance of the police department and shall adopt and promulgate rules and regulations for the government of the police department and for the," and this is important, "and for the discipline of its members." Under 78-1B1, it states administer and enforce the rules and regulations of the police department and any special emergency directive for the disposition, and, again, this is important, discipline, of the department and its members and officers. Furthermore, 78-4, "The appropriate authority," crossed out chief of police, "shall promulgate rules and regulations as he deems necessary for the government and efficient working of the Long Branch Police Department, but to include, but not limited to, matters relating to," again, important, "discipline, training efficiency, and use and care of equipment and apparatus." We've noticed a change under 78-1C. Apparently, we've gone from five captains to four captains, and we've added a sergeant. The matter on this, with the appropriate authority, this government shows to go ahead and select the mayor. We're under NJSA 48:14-118. "The appropriate authority," and I'm quoting, "means the mayor, manager, or such other appropriate executive or administrator officer, such as a full-time director of public safety or the governing body, or any designated committee, et cetera, et cetera." So, this council is voting tonight to make the mayor, the appropriate authority, of the police department, when we have a city administrator with an extensive background in the police department and a city administrator with extensive background in administration. Very interesting. If on face value, it's correct that this document was written incorrectly a year ago, and this is the corrected version this evening. Let's hope, for the sake of this city...
Mr. Lapore, you have one minute.
Thank you, clerk. That, quote, "the appropriate authority," unquote, is able to do a better job running this police department, even though the police chief will be reporting to the appropriate authority and still running the police department. Let's hope that this police department gets on a better course than what has been for the past year. That's all.
Anyone else?
Ernest McNoly, Asbury Park, New Jersey. We're talking about the ordinance to have the public safety director, yes?
Nothing about a public safety director, no.
I'm sorry?
I think we're talking about the police ordinance, but it's not about a public safety director.
All right, well, what exactly are we talking about?
We're talking about an ordinance concerning the police department, but it's not an ordinance about a public safety director.
All right, well, what is the ordinance about?
So, the ordinance is about the organization of the police department, and it just establishes what the appropriate lines of authority are in a municipal police department where there's a police chief.
All right, that's a semantical answer. I appreciate that.
Not only that, it's the correct answer, so...
Well, in your own mind, in your own mind, you're always correct. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, I am generally...
You're like the authority on the authority, so why would I question anything you say? So, clearly, everybody has major issues with the running of the Long Branch Police Department. I mean, I was born and raised here, and it was pretty bad when I was born and raised here, and I think it's gotten worse. I think previous speakers make excellent points about the, not just the organization, but the pay and the salary and the excesses in terms of how many sergeants, lieutenants, captains, now a chief? I mean, not for 50 years. Just before the last mayor left, he made a six-month captain, a chief. I mean, really, he's supposed to be captain for one year. Everybody knows the civil service rules, but for our police chief, for Long Branch's, all the rules were sort of bent, and we're paying the price for it. And I'm certainly paying the price personally. I don't even feel comfortable coming to Long Branch with the current police force that you have here. I should feel like that? I go to church here and have to worry? So, you talk about organization, it's problematic. So much so, that at the last council meeting, I understand that there was a meeting after having to do with organization and police and Long Branch. And I think it took place at the, what's the restaurant, the Duck? Somebody help me out.
Sitting Duck.
Sitting Duck, right. And isn't it interesting? I think the police chief was there, the financial director, a couple of the firemen, and they were just letting them have it, talking about sex stuff about the mayor and the mayor's brother and... I mean, what kind of organization would do that? Really, really be horrible about their own city? And you know what? The only thing they ever offer is, "We deny everything. We deny everything." You deny what's going on at Holy Smokes. You deny the Sunday organization of the police. How do you have 700 people show up on a church day with liquors, cigars, some of them armed? I don't know why. Why can't they go back to Holy Trinity? And this police chief's involved, and the city director knows about it, and the financial director, and all the firemen, and all the police are members, they're bringing in, you know, really? They, as an organization, police, are lambasting our current mayor, our current mayor's brother in public, our senator. And how do they get away with it? Look, I mean, just look, you talk organization. I'm making statements, and you have a chief who sits there texting, and he thinks everything's funny. I mean, what is that, a tick?
Mr. McNoly, this is really supposed to be...
It's about organization, okay?
No, but it's about this ordinance, you know?
Okay, well, how many time left?
Thirty seconds. Thirty-eight seconds.
Thirty seconds? Okay. Is the public aware of the victim of the Jack's Bar? Who it is? Why don't we get that out on the table now?
It has nothing to do with this ordinance.
It has to do with police organization.
No, it has nothing to do with that.
There we go. Now, you're going to interrupt.
We're talking about this ordinance at this time.
Yeah, police, police...
If you have something else to say, you can talk about it later on. We open up the public portion.
You know, that's really not fair. This is about police organization.
No, it's not. It's not being unfair, it's being what we need to do.
I know, okay. So, now, you're a judge, Ms. Wittes. I get it.
I'm being sincere with you. That's what you're talking about. It should be brought up later on if you want to bring something else...
It's about the organization of the police, and you don't want to hear it.
But that's not what this ordinance is about. This ordinance is about not what you're talking about. You're making allegations, it has nothing to do with us.
Allegations?
Yes.
Will they plead guilty here?
Okay, please sit down. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to talk about this ordinance? Okay. I need a motion to close.
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is the third reading of ordinance 8-19 entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 78 of the Code of the City of Long Branch Police Department. I need a motion to adopt on third and final reading and advertise according to law.
To move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the second reading of ordinance 9-19 entitled an ordinance adopting an affordable housing development fee ordinance for the city of Long Branch. This ordinance was introduced on May 22, 2019. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
To move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding this ordinance? Please step to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once. Is there anyone? Anyone else?
I'm going to lose my voice. I thought there'd be more people. Ernest McNoly, no one seems to care about affordable housing, but that's my opinion. I think that would include Lower Broadway, right? The plan to include affordable housing in some of the buildings, isn't that correct? No?
Nothing to do with that development.
Yeah.
It has to do with affordable housing.
No, this has to do with a fee for projects that don't include affordable housing.
Okay. Does that include Lower Broadway?
No, Lower Broadway includes affordable housing. This doesn't apply to them.
You know, counselor, you got to explain to me again. You're pretty good at that.
I'll explain. It's pretty easy to explain.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
So, this is, I'll tell you, it's easy. So, this is an ordinance that establishes a fee that any project that doesn't include affordable housing has to contribute to our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and that money is then used for rehabilitation of other units. The Lower Broadway project actually, this doesn't apply to it for two reasons. One is they already have an approval, but more importantly, they actually include 30 units of affordable housing. So, in lieu of paying the fee, they're actually building the affordable housing. So, this has nothing to do with that project.
But certainly, the approval of the land to build affordable housing on should pass EPA standards, isn't that correct? I mean, why don't we dig below Lower Broadway and where Cipristines used to be and see if there's any polluted ground under there?
That has nothing to do with this ordinance. I just told you that. That project doesn't have anything to do with this ordinance.
Okay, so, in other words, this is a way for developers to say, "Look, I want to build unaffordable housing, and you need affordable housing, and in order for me to do that and maybe get some tax abatements, you're going to pay a fine." Well, what does a fine matter to multi-billionaires? Why let them out like that?
Not a fine.
Well, that's how you explained it to me. In other words, if they don't comply, they pay into a fund.
They contribute to a fund to rehabilitate other housing, to make it a...
It's not a fine. What is it?
It's a fee. It's right, so, for instance, so, I mean, if you go through it, you'll see what the numbers are, but the purpose of it is to fund our affordable housing program that rehabilit, we have a rehabilitation obligation to the state, something like 350 units, and this fund will be collecting money to rehabilitate houses to keep them affordable. That's the purpose of it. It's not a penalty or a fine. People can build their affordable housing, or they can contribute to this fund to, so that we can rehabilitate other houses and make them affordable. That's the purpose of it. That's what it is. I mean, you can call it whatever you want, but that's what this is. That's what the ordinance is called, it was approved by the court, and we're adopting it. So, it went to the Superior Court, we submitted it, they approved it, it was signed off by the Fair Share Housing Center, which is the preeminent agency in the state for affordable housing, and that's what it is.
You know, I love to give you my time because I love when you commit to all these things, and then we could see on the record the result it has on Long Branch in reality, based on, you know, this plan that you make it sound like you're social workers. Really, this city's suffering. You build a million-dollar homes, and the rest of the people are either homeless or can't pay their taxes, and you make it sound like, you know, this is peanut butter and jelly. It's a great thing. Well, you know, you're following in the footsteps of Ann Selgram Aaron. Look what they did to this city. So, now we have a different law firm. You want any more of my time?
No.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I need a motion to close.
To move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
This is the third reading of ordinance 9-19 entitled an ordinance adopting an affordable housing development fee ordinance for the city of Long Branch. I need a motion.
To move. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the second reading of ordinance 10-19 entitled an ordinance adopting policy regarding property tax exemptions for 100% disabled veterans. This ordinance was introduced on May 22, 2019. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding this ordinance? Please step to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Hi, Ernest McNoly. I just want to say, you know, it's strained for me with my voice, but I'm volunteering. You know why? You know, what's appalling about this? That there's nobody else from the city here. How can that be? And you let an out-of-towner like me come up here and strain my voice? It's not fair. It's not fair.
Do you have anything to talk about this ordinance?
Yeah, I do. I am talking about the ordinance. How grossly unfair I think it is that now, all of a sudden, after what was done to the disabled vets for Pure Village, now you're going to make it sound like we're all pro-vets. You guys voted to throw them all out of their homes, and now, in your, the primary administration, and now you're saying, "Oh, look how nice we are to veterans." Okay, so, finally, is that going to help any of the Purple Hearts that were thrown out in the street to build Pure Village?
That has nothing to do with us right now.
It's what?
We didn't build Pure Village. We're here now, moving forward to make this a better city. So, do you have anything to talk about this ordinance or not?
I am. I'm talking about this thing about, okay.
And I'd like to hear what you have to say.
All right, why don't you take my time and tell me what I'm trying to say?
I have no idea what you're trying to say.
So, then, why would you stop me?
I'm waiting.
Okay. So...
Mr. McNoly, the city, from my understanding, has been honoring what is in this ordinance for quite some time, but if I'm not mistaken, it was either Mr. Raynold or Mr. Martin who said that it needed to be put in effect, codified.
They're doing what? They're codifying?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
It's simply that.
Okay, so, in other words, we're not going to talk about past history, just, we'll go forward, right? That's how everything's going forward. So, we're talking about giving them 100, what is it? Do we, do you know what percentage, or?
If you're 100%, Mr. Raynold, if you're 100% disabled, you are exempt from...
Property tax.
From what?
From property tax.
Property tax if you're 100% disabled.
Oh, that's great. And you don't have to be a, you don't have to be a developer.
No, I'm sorry, veteran, yes.
Oh, okay. Because I know the developer...
Do you have it in front of you? It's a sentence here, I can...
All right. So, now...
A service connected disability by the United States Veteran Administration. And you just have to show some documentation that you are 100% disabled.
And you're saying it's been here, but you're just kind of like formalizing it into the code or something?
I'm just trying to tell you that we're codifying a practice that we've...
What do you mean by codify?
...done for some time, right? Mr. Raynold, did you want to add something to it? It's pretty simple.
Can you explain to me what codify means?
Sure.
So, we're putting it in the city code, so codify there.
Why wouldn't you just say that? It's very confusing. I don't know what codify means.
Okay, sorry. So, all we're doing here, the city has been doing this for a long time, this is a state program. We're just establishing that when you file your application, and it gets granted, that we're going to pay you from whenever the date of your application. Is that correct, Mike?
Your exemption starts the date of your application.
The exemption starts the date of your application. So, the state requires us to establish that policy, so we just wanted to make it clear.
Okay, so, it relates to their, if they're a homeowner, it relates to their property tax?
Correct.
All right, it has nothing to do if they're a renter or anything like that?
No, this is a property tax, this is a state property tax program.
Okay. And now, it's going to be officially in the code? And that's what this vote's about?
Yeah, the date that it is effective. It's actually in the state, it's actually in state law, too.
Great, that's a nice thing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I need a motion to close.
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is the third reading of ordinance 10-19 entitled an ordinance adopting policy regarding property tax exemptions for 100% disabled... policy regarding property tax exemptions for one hundred percent disabled veterans. I need a motion to adopt on third and final reading and advertise according to law.
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Um, ordinance for introduction, public hearing is scheduled for June twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen. This is the first reading of ordinance eleven dash nineteen entitled an ordinance amending chapter three, twenty-five, section twenty-six, schedule two, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets of the code of the city of Long Branch. I need a motion to introduce on first reading and advertise and post according to law and set the public hearing for June twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen.
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance twelve dash nineteen entitled Article One Traffic and Parking Regulations. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law and set the public hearing for June twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance thirteen dash nineteen entitled Chapter Two Forty-four Parking Lots and Meters. I need a motion to introduce on first reading and advertise and post according to law and set the public hearing for June twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen.
So move.
So move.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance fourteen dash nineteen entitled an ordinance amending an ordinance establishing titles and setting salaries for certain employees of the city of Long Branch for the year two thousand and nineteen. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law and set the public hearing for June twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for the listed resolutions and general comments.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If anyone in the audience has any comments to make, please step to the microphone and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
My name is Anita Craybring, and I live on one sixty-one Garry Drive. I would like to just gratefully thank the city of Long Branch and Motion Center for the Pender living for opening another path avenue beach last Saturday, June the eighth. This was the opening of a fully accessible beach that was well-attended, and Mayor Pollon, Congressman Frank Pollon, and Senator Erica Towing, and State Senator Frankel Pope spoke about the beach being fully accessible to people with disabilities. I strongly believe that the beach will be the prototype for other accessible beaches across our state, and that everyone benefits, not just people with disabilities, but businesses, families, and all citizens in general. I gratefully thank the beach as hope is everyone, and has helped us to patronize it and keep it green. I gratefully thank Mayor Pollon, the council members, and motions, especially Stanley Sonnen, for the tireless efforts and support of the accessible beach, and invite everyone to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
[applause]
Requesting one-minute notification, Vincent Lapore, thirty-three Ocean Terrace, Long Councilman Viera, did you ever arrange a meeting with representatives of the Sephardic Torah, two thirteen Lenox Avenue, for future construction?
No, I did not.
You never arranged a meeting with the mayor, with the members of the Sephardic Torah?
No, I did not, Mr. Lapore.
Okay. Councilman Viera, you're a liar. You're a liar. We'll continue this. Let your face turn red. The Monachum Shabbat, your face is always red, it's gonna be redder with more lies.
Please refrain from calling people names.
Calling what?
People names.
What did I call as a name?
You called him a liar.
And that's a fact.
No, it's not a fact.
It's a fact, Ms. Miss Wittes, do not judge my statements.
You're gonna be up here, if you're gonna be up there
I'm continuing
Please sit down.
On the Monachum Shabbat, we understand they've now come to the city for full tax exemption on the building. They wanna get out of the commercial part of the building. If they don't get the tax exemption, they're going to leave the commercial sections empty. Nice. We did an overlay to accommodate them, the city did, not me. And this is what they're doing to us on a building and a use that shouldn't be there? We're watching this one. We're watching this one. Because any full tax exemption for the Monachum Shabbat building is counterproductive to the West End overlay, and literally spits in the face of every resident of the city of Long Branch. Tonight, counsel, you adopted ordinance eight nineteen, and yet you have a resolution that came on today authorizing contract for review and evaluation of the police department. In other words, you're hiring a consultant government strategy group for one year totaling forty-three thousand nine hundred. Hope it doesn't take a year to get results. Noticed under the scope of work to be done, discipline is mentioned throughout. The review of civilian complaints, which has been a joke in this city, and the review of internal affairs, which has been another cruel joke, also the grievance procedure, which has been deplorable. The resolution goes on to state it will be conducting interviews with a whole host of city personnel, and yet nowhere in this resolution, excuse me, doesn't mention having interviews with victims of LBD, or citizens or civilians of this city that have issues with LBD. The purpose, scope, and detail described in the proposal states as, quote, "decrease future professional liability expenses." That explains itself in the past year what's been taking place with LBD. Because of this legal liability exposure increasingly incurred by LBD, there's an understanding as to why the city has to address the situation. However, in the alternative to a consultant, the following could have been done by the city, particularly over the past two years, there should have already been placed a civilian review board. Patty Fisher has been bringing this up for a year and a half. Had there been a civilian review board, we would have been ahead of the curve in dealing with issues of LBD.
Mr. Lapore, you have one minute.
Also, in addition to that, we could have asked the state attorney general to come in. Number three, we could have enforced the Garity warnings, where disciplinary measures could have been done departmentally with termination. The Garity hasn't been touched by this city. Could have called the state attorney general in to run the police department, along with the state police. We could deal with past members of LBD, one to mention Charles King, Long Branch's version of Serpico to LBD. We could have also brought in Solomon Dweck under the subpoena, which this council failed to do, so that he can inform this council of the curries of LBD with Solomon Dweck, but just won't go there. I may add with Charlie King, both Councilwoman Selly and Mayor Pollon as part of the Schneider team prevented any disclosure of information by Mr. King on LBD.
Thank you, Ms. Viera. You're welcome.
This is junk government. Never forget it.
Is there anyone else?
You might ask me what I, oh, I gotta dig my, I'm Linda Swinby, and I reside at Gregory School Apartments. You might ask, you might ask me what I'm doing with all this stuff. Well, this is a cup. This is a mug. I'm getting someplace by this, so it's just, just hang on. And this is what you guys gave out, uh, the green, Long Branch, working for a green future, okay? And here's, uh, another mug. My, what I'm doing here is, uh, I work at the beach, and I started out Memorial Weekend at Seaview, the Seaview Beach. And I was doing checking coolers and observing people. I observed a lot of people with bags like this. And I also observed a lot of people with these kind of, you know, varieties of different mugs, no, and answers to, uh, answer to plastic bags, and answer to straws, no straws. But my, I do have a question of, what about the garbage bags? Those big plastic garbage bags, you see tons of them thrown in dumpsters? What can be done to come up with a solution for the garbage bags? We're talking about, you know, you're dealing with the recycling of plastic bags. How can we deal with the big garbage bags? What's the solution for that? You know, it's plastic, it's going into landfills, doing whatever is done. So I remember years ago, I, uh, remember the word biodegradable, anybody? It was a big push, I think back maybe in the seventies, early eighties, somewhere in there. I'm not sure of the time, timeline, but we dealt with biodegradable as a push for biodegradable. Do we hear that anymore? I don't think so. So is there something we can get back to researching and getting back to, uh, coming up with a solution for biodegradable, uh, bags, things, uh, even, even these, you know? But this is a good solution, but maybe we can even make these biodegradable. They do wear out. This is a good solution, come from the Environmental Commission, but, or come up, at least, you know, if we're dealing with this promotion for the city, we can use these bags, hand them out to the community, people that come into town. But I've observed, and people are do, are catching on to this, but my, if we could deal with the garbage bags, cause even, you're, excuse me, I'm tired, kinda talking, but if we could come up with an idea to deal with the garbage bags as we have the, even the plastic bags, the recycling, uh, you know, biodegradable things, maybe that's another solution to, a part of the solution to even adding on to all of this. So anyway, it's something maybe you can all consider and maybe research and see if there's something we can get back into. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion, I'm sorry, you're gonna?
Hi, good evening. Patty Veraki, two forty-six Tyrone Avenue, Oakhurst. About a year ago this week, we lost a very valuable member of, of, of Long Branch, a city resident, speaker at council meetings, Jerry Scorano, and, um, he was always, if anything, always bringing up, um, to have the cable TV in the council chambers, which unfortunately happened right after his passing. I was wondering if in his honor, if we could not only just have a moment of silence, but possibly look into honoring him in some way, whether at the park, Jerry Morgan Park, with some plantings, he was big with the garden club, um, maybe some plaque representing his push for cable TV. And I think we also should honor Harold Pudgy Cooper for, um, also a moment of silence as we lost him a couple weeks ago, and he contributed a lot at council meetings, so, um, it would be nice if we could do that. Thank you.
So this is kind of open commenting? Good. And you'll let me know if I'm on target, right? Well, well, now I guess I can say what I wanna say. So, um, I, I don't know how
Ernest McNolli, could you raise the mic just a little bit?
Yes, yes, Mayor. How's that better?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I don't have the greatest voice now, do I? It's pretty raspy, but anyway, uh, I, I think I came here tonight mostly about the theme of the Long Branch Police Department, and I say that because I guess some of you know I was born here, and I pretty much know the earlier generation and now the current generation, and now we're actually getting into the third generation. And, uh, I don't, I don't think anybody here can deny, can deny what's going on in the news. And I can only tell you that what's going on in the news is a watered-down minimizing of what's really going on in Long Branch. Let me use what I consider the most important example. When you leave here and you go out the back and you see the monument to the heroes, the police of Long Branch, probably the most prominent one is Detective King. And I understand now the press is open about things that have been happening after the swearing at Long Branch High School, the party at Jack's, all the uniform officers, everyone there, firemen, prosecutors, everyone there. And yet, a brother, a retired Long Branch cop, has to have his daughter, uh, some people say brutalized that were witnesses, but, uh, you know, in the trial, they said, gee, you're guilty of touching her buttocks. So, you know, the family's distraught, and everyone comes here trying to figure out, how do all the victims of police abuse ever, ever get justice in this city? It, it's sort of like they become maligned and, and shunned, and all these secret deals with the prosecutor and the attorney general, and charges seem to disappear, and, and then if they come up with civil charges, they're, the family is, is, is distraught. Where's the support for all these people? How, how does a Patrick Joyce Junior in Belmar break a man's jaw, break his arm, break his ribs, brutalize him, and get back on the police force? And then he becomes the fourth most violent cop in New Jersey? And of course, he's very close with the current administration, uh, you know, I would say chief, but he'll probably get mad at me. Chief seems to support Joyce and Pascucci, and Pascucci's the drunk detective cop that killed a state trooper's aunt, right, right at the corner of Broadway and, and, and Ocean Boulevard. And look, look what's going on now. Pascucci's still driving around. He's never gone to jail. Joyce is working together with him in, in landscaping business. They're partners with some prosecutors. I mean, how much more, I don't know. Will I get in trouble if I say corruption? I don't, I don't wanna. But that's corruption, that's nepotism, that's denying victims But that's corruption, that's nepotism, that's denying victims' rights. And, and why? For what? For this fraternity of firemen and officials and, and cops? They're not worth it. And I don't know if this administration, we worked real, real hard to get this administration here, and you remember, you put the brooms down in the basement, wow, you know, soon as we're sworn in, it's gonna be a, right in the lobby, a clean sweep. Everybody's still here, most people. And what you fail to realize, and, and I'm gonna be very blunt and frank about it, these same people you sit next to are sabotaging this administration. They're demeaning and demoralizing you in public with statements about you, your families, your sex life, et cetera. And it's all okay. It's not okay. And we're wondering when anyone's gonna hold them accountable. And what they said about the Long Branch, the new judge, after the last meeting, about, you know, why would they bring you-know-what here, a you-know-what? Is that my time up?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Palone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.[1028.44][1028.44](pause). I need a motion to close the public participation portion of this meeting.
Hail.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
We can take the listed resolutions as a consent agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Hail.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Whitaker?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the listed applications.
Hail.
Second.
Mr. Fazio, New Jersey, State Firemen's Association Membership Application, Uniform Fire Division. Roll call. Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Whitaker?
Yes.
At this time, Councilman Dangler, do you have anything that you'd like to say this evening?
Yes, a few quick things. Just like to send, send my, or maybe even on behalf of the mayor and council, our condolences to the Pudgy Cooper's family, because as Ms. Veracey said, he was certainly a mainstay and a part of the Long Branch fiber here, and he gave a lot of time fighting for, just fighting for Long Branch. And I do appreciate and certainly miss him, so I would just like to extend that. For National Night Out, I spoke to the mayor, and hopefully we could work something out. Slocum Park is very nice. We do a very good job. It's always very crowded, but hopefully we can use, borrow, whatever term you wanna use, the property right across the street so we can expand and possibly even block off the, the, yes?
Can't hear you, I'm sorry.
For National Night Out, I've asked the mayor to look into if we can use the, the property across the street from Slocum Park so we can expand what we do. We do a good job at Slocum Park, but we just can, maybe we can expand so we can have even more, more space in it to children, everybody else can have a good time, and just block off the, those two entrances there, Slocum and Lippincott, just again, so we can have a little more room. That was one of the things that I wanted to bring up. The other thing I wanted to bring up real quickly is I went to, all of us went to the, this grand opening of the basement of the library, and I wanted to congratulate the Department of Public Works and certainly Tanya and her staff for their vision, for us not having to close down what we would, we would consider historic, certainly, but it was, it was done beautifully, very, very nice, nice job. And I do remember as a kid going down there, and since my dad was, was a janitor there for about ten or so years before he switched over, so it was very nicely done, and you should be proud. And lastly, holy smokes, just for Mr. McNolley made a comment again about holy spokes. I did ask the, I believe the business administrator, and certainly about in regards to what's going on upstairs, and other than the girls, which I have no idea about any girls coming in and out for whatever reason, but it's not against the law for them to drink or have cigars or even play cards if they so choose. So I don't, I don't know what else we could do, but I did ask if they are within their, within the law to do, to drink and smoke cigars. That's, again, it's not illegal for them to do that. Again, the girls, unless you got some proof, like that I cannot answer, answer to, just as if anyone else was to do the same in their house, if they wanna drink and have cigars and have a card party, it's not against the law. In regards to allowing people to come up, we want everyone to come up. We've always said that, anybody wants to come up certainly has a right, come up and speak, and we will be as respectful as possible, and we are not here to have anybody lose their voice because they wanna come up and speak. If you choose, your voice is, you know, you're not feeling well, then hold it until the next time, but we're not, we're not definitely here to have anyone get sick because they wanna speak. And the Long Branch residents, they are welcome to speak, just like anyone who comes from out of town. We do not have any ordinance that says you can't speak because you're from out of town or any other thing like that. So I just wanna let everyone know that holy smokes, I did ask questions, and they seem to be doing whatever they're supposed to be doing within the city ordinance and certainly within the law. Thank you very much, and have a blessed time until I see you again.
Thank you. Councilman Viera?
Yes, good evening. First, I'd like to congratulate Tanya, beautiful job with our library and Stanford Public Works, beautiful. You men did a wonderful job. Frank, thanks for the breakfast for all the first responders. And secondly, motions, and the day that we experienced over at the first accessible beach in North Bath, it was a beautiful thing. You see things on people's faces that makes it worthwhile being here for it. And Anita came up and mentioned something about it, and Anita, thank you, because you had a lot to do with that, too. So don't leave yourself out, you had a beautiful part of that, all right? And, and that's about it, and I'd like to wish everybody a happy Father's Day. And good evening.
Councilwoman Whitaker?
So this is gonna be a little bit of a repeat, because I also wanted to build on what Anita said. You were very instrumental in making all that happen last Saturday was a wonderful day for Long Branch in terms of opening the accessible beach. Anita worked through our disability committee. Councilwoman Selly is also on that, and that committee was very, very important in making it happen. So thanks and congratulations to, to you, to the committee, and certainly Stan, to you and your whole staff. You were amazing. So the city thanks you for everything that you did. We could not be more proud of our librarian, who continues, absolutely, right?[1455.13][1455.13](applause). You know when you have a visionary, you know, in your midst, someone who can see possibilities and then also has the skill to make those things happen. We are so fortunate, Tanya, to have you. Thank you for all that you do. Happy Father's Day. Thank you for the breakfast and for honoring our first responders, and thank you all for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Council vice president, Selly?
Tonight, I usually don't say much, but tonight I have four things, and I would appreciate it if you'd pay attention. We're not in school, but I mean, I know a lot of you get a little tired, but anyway. First of all, Long Branch lost a very dedicated person to the city of Long Branch recently. He loved the city and the people in it. He was a very outspoken person. His name was Harold Pudgy Cooper, and he was well-known throughout the city. I met Pudgy some 20 years ago, when he would come to the council meetings. He would tell you like it is, and if he didn't like it, he sure was gonna tell you. But occasionally, he'd come and praise us for something that he thought we had done right. He was a true political activist for the city. We will all miss him. Rest in peace, my friend. The second thing I'd like to comment on is, and thank the American Vespucci for doing all the planting of the bushes and the flowers around the city hall complex. It really looks beautiful, and it makes everybody happy and instill the pride back that you have in the city. The next thing I would like to say and encourage everybody is to visit our lower level of the library and see what has been added. We are now in the 21st century with the modern autovisual equipment. Many thanks to DPW for their fantastic job of making this a reality, and certainly to the library director and her staff. My last thing is always a happy thing, and that is, happy Father's Day to all of you that are or wish you were. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Palone?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to also wish everyone a happy, happy Father's Day to the dads who are out there. Again, I'd like to thank Tanya, Frank, Anita, Stan, for all that you do. This is what this community is all about, so thank you. And to many others out there as well, who, who I see, who, who are always helping the community and have the interest of Long Branch in mind. With that, I wanted to add that the, it's already been mentioned, the ribbon cutting for the fully accessible beach in Long Branch at North Bath Avenue Beach Entrance was this past Saturday, and thank you again for everyone who joined us for a great morning. The next coffee with the mayor is on June 25th from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. at the Elbron Firehouse, that's 173 Lincoln Avenue. This is our third coffee with the mayor and council this year. Also, the Portuguese Day celebration starts this Friday at City Hall at 5:00 p.m. with the raising of the Portuguese flag, followed by a whole weekend of events. Check out our social media for more information. Our first Neighborhood Fun Day, which I've talked about, is on June 21st at 5:00 p.m. at Jerry Morgan Park. Please join us there for some free family fun. And I also wanted to end with Pudgy Cooper, somebody that I've known most of my life, actually, and he will be deeply missed and, and will always be appreciated. So thank you and have a great day.
Thank you. And Patty, thank you for your suggestions regarding Jerry, we certainly will look into something for him. And at this time, we, I would like to have a moment of silence, silence for Pudgy Cooper.
Thank you. He'll truly be missed. And I wanna wish all the fathers out there a happy Father's Day, and Anita, I too wanna say I was very touched with the ribbon cutting at North Bath Avenue, and it was a beautiful day for all of us. And hopefully, this is only the beginning of doing more and more for the residents of Long Branch. I need a motion for adjournment.
Hail.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening, and thank you for coming out.
I'm away next week. I'm away next week. I'm going to Italy.
Oh, wow.
Nice. Been there?
I have never been.
Really?
I've never been there.
Unbelievable.
My wife and I and my daughter has planned...